I've been running between meetings, so if I kind of look more crazy than normal, you know why. I want to welcome you this afternoon and over the next couple of days. We are having town hall meetings regarding our strategic planning process. In that, we have our consultants who will be leading the charge today with you all. But a couple of things that I want to put in front of you and have you all think about, okay? Is one, that this strategic plan is built on our vision, okay? Chancellor Margaret's got her vision of this place, but we have to have that vision. A very viable and vibrant college. You have to have a very viable and vibrant strategic plan. And you know the stories about strategic plans. They usually come in a notebook that weigh about 30 pounds, and then you put them up on shelves someplace and they get dusty. We're not doing that here, okay? We ain't doing that. What we're doing is we're doing a very clear and concise strategic plan that gives us the direction in which we need to go in, okay? You notice me, it's all of us, okay? It's just not Joey, it's just not Margaret, it's not Evan, it's all of us, okay? And that strategic plan is comprehensive to the services and areas we have within this college, okay? So that's that. Then to break it down even more is then we have goals and objectives to meet that strategic plan. Because if we don't have that, then that plan sits on the shelf and it becomes dusty. And we don't achieve what we need to achieve, for whom? For students, okay? And we have to make sure, we have to measure those results, right? And so that's coming. The time is now for that. That shouldn't frighten us, okay? But we have to show not only us, but our students and accreditors and the whole wide world, not only what we're doing and how we're doing it, but what we are achieving, okay? Because by gosh, I know, and I know all of you know, we've got a great college, okay? But here's a competitor, Margaret. Prove it. Prove that we do, okay? And we have to prove it. And that's a good thing. Because when we achieve a goal, what do we do? We have a card. We achieve the goal, we celebrate that achievement, but then we take the next step on, okay? We just don't say, hey, you did it. We just keep doing it. And all of that is the circle of what? Not life.
Quality improvement.
Quality improvement. It's continuous quality improvement.
And it's circle of life.
Yeah, it's a circle of life. That's why we get gray hair, okay? So today, you have your agenda, okay? You've got that chancellor person, and then Jasmine's going to talk to you. But then Maggie is going to give you the entire picture of what the process is doing, okay? And I will assure you, it hasn't been just Margaret or PTC, okay? All of you in some regard have been involved in this, okay? So Maggie's going to give you an overview of the process. Then we're going to look at what's been drafted as our mission, vision, values, and strategic priorities, alright? And then last part is next steps, what we're going to do. Here's my expectation for you as your colleague. Didn't say it's chancellor, but I'll tell you. I want you to use questions or comments for them. You ask, our team leads today, okay? You ask. There is no dumb question, right? Because the chancellor asks them all the time. There is no dumb question. All of you are bright people with good hearts. Let's make sure we get this right, because this is going to be with us for a while. Not 10 years, because we do things quicker than 10 years' time. But we want to get it right, okay? Any questions for me so far? Go sit on the back row. What?
I'm sitting right here.
Alright, did you bring anything, Dee?
No.
Alright, well then, with Maggie, I will turn it over to you, and/or Jasmine.
No, just thank you all for being here. We really, really appreciate this turnout. Just let Maggie jump on in.
I wonder if I need to stand over there, huh? Can you guys hear us on South Campus? Okay, so I will hang out over here to make sure that everybody can hear what this Dee said. And I will try to be intentional in pausing the conversation here and asking those of you that are joining us remotely if you have questions. If for some reason I move on without thinking about it, feel free to just start waving your arms again, and then we all know that we need to call on you and not forget about you. So, anyway, just a follow-up from Dr. Ellebi's remarks. Thank you for making time to be here this afternoon and to be a part of this process. As she said, we're going to frame the process to date a little bit and then really get into the fun stuff, which is where the plan is going. And our goal this afternoon is to get feedback from you. None of these things come out in the first round the way they look in the final round. And they get better and stronger with each iteration because of feedback from the campus community and from the external community and anyone who has a vested interest in this campus and in success. So that's our goal today. And tomorrow, when we have a similar session, is to get feedback so that we can continue to strengthen this plan and make sure that we're identifying the right priorities and activities for the campus moving forward. So real quickly, let me just frame for you what the process has looked like. And some of you have been involved in different levels of conversations throughout this. So maybe repeat information for you, but it's always good to have a refresher. We broke the process down into four different phases, and we started this work officially in October of last fall. And so the first phase, we talked discovery, informing, and organizing. It's really just making sure that the plan that we proposed for this process aligns with the vision that the college had for the process. And making sure that the plan that we outlined in our proposal is really works out timing-wise and everything else. And so just starting to confirm that. And then it's a lot of document review, getting accreditation reports, annual reports, your college and unit level goals and activities that have been happening, and really getting to know the college campus through documents. And that really helps inform the second phase where we dig a little bit more deeper into that. But we really then get to know the campus through the people. And many of you engaged with us when we were here on campus in December through focus groups and interviews and gave us some feedback. And that, I think, tells us a different story, a complimentary story normally to the documents. Thankfully, we didn't come out and get one vision of the campus from reading documents and a whole other vision from talking to the people here. I think we received good information from both sources or all sources that really helped us get an idea of where PTC at that point, UA PTC now, was and is looking to go in the future. So then, starting in the new year, really focused November, December on focus groups and interviews. And then coming back into the new year, we had a survey that went out to the campus community to get some additional feedback about where things were moving. And so that went into January. And then really from January through last month, we were mining the data and looking for themes, looking for ideas, and what would be necessary to pull out priorities for the campus. We were down here in March and met with a smaller committee, a steering committee, to really start to vet some of our initial ideas about what the priorities and objectives could be, what the mission, vision, and value statements could be based upon what we heard from everybody that we had engaged with and looking at the history of the campus and this new future being part of the University of Arkansas system as well. From that visit at the beginning of March, we really moved into what is Phase Four that we're continuing through right now, and that's refining the statements, making sure that they resonate with the larger population, sharing it with groups like you. And then we will come, hopefully in May, to some conclusions about what this looks like and get consensus around that from this steering committee again and start to talk about the implementation plan and metrics for success. And we'll talk a little bit about that as we go through this conversation today. Any questions regarding the process, what we've done, or where we're going? Okay?
You will have a Q&amp;A session in, right?
Yes, and actually, we're going to break it up throughout the session. So as we talk about different elements of it, there'll be opportunities for you to ask questions and present feedback. And the very last slide, just a little preview, will be our email address so that you can send us additional thoughts afterwards if you aren't able to share information. So as I mentioned, we had a series of focus groups, interviews, and the survey that we used to collect information both from the campus community and the external community. And this is just a snapshot of what those engagement activities look like. Through the focus groups, we engaged 106 individuals. So either in focus groups or one-on-one conversations, we had 131 different individuals. And that was representative of students, faculty, staff, alumni, foundation board members, business leaders, and different people in the community to give us different perspectives of what the campus needs to be thinking about and prioritizing moving forward. And the same thing, we had a cross-section of individuals involved in the interviews that we conducted with individuals on campus and out in the community. And then the survey, we had a mix of responses, mostly on campus. Did we have community responses in that? I think it was focused on. We had some community responses?
I believe so, yes.
So I don't have to break down it up, but if anyone's curious, just follow up with that and give some information. So again, as I said, we took all this information and we pulled out themes and ideas looking at what previous statements, previous work with the campus had been, and knowing where the campus needed to go, and thinking through some different things. So one of the things that we started with was developing, reviewing, and proposing some new mission, vision, and value statements. And so what I want to do now is take a little bit of time and talk through each of these statements before we jump into the priorities. So as a reminder, the current mission statement is projected up there on the board. So the college's mission is to provide access to high-quality education that promotes student learning, to enable individuals to develop to their fullest potential, and to support the economic development of the state. So we presented this to individuals. We also just talked in general about what the college should be doing. As a reminder, a mission statement is a statement that defines what you do. It might talk about who you serve, but it's really about what the college does. And so based on the feedback, you also, if you picked up the handouts, should have the current, the proposed statements on that handout as well. I don't think, it does not have the previous statements, but if you wanted to look at this handout, I don't have the color version that you guys have, but it has the proposed mission, vision, and value statements there for you to look at. So we are proposing, "The University of Arkansas Palaske Technical College provides access to high-quality education that promotes student learning and enables individuals to develop to their fullest potential." So there's a couple of things that you'll notice off the bat. The idea of high-quality education continued to come through as an important theme as we talked to various stakeholders, both on campus and in the community. That ensuring quality regardless of what brought the student to campus, that it was, that the campus was presenting and providing them the highest quality education possible was a really important piece that we heard. So we made sure to keep that piece in there. And then the second big difference, I think, that you might see in there is the first statement, the previous statement talks about supporting the economic development of the state, and the second does not. And there was a lot of discussion that really the purpose of the college is about the students, and that the mission statement needed to focus on the students. And we had some conversation about this with the steering committee when we were here a few weeks ago, and where that fits in there. And so ultimately, at this point, we rested upon a statement that does focus on the student and the student experience as the primary driver of the college. And so I just want to frame that for you to think about a little bit. And we'll pause here, and I would love questions, feedback. We really don't want to spend too much, any time, I guess, getting nitty-gritty wordsmithing. We're thinking more big picture. What resonates with you? What makes you scrunch up your face and wonder what we were thinking? Just high-level feedback. You know, if there's small, nitty-gritty things, we would welcome you sending those to us in the email. But I know you've all been in the meetings where we could spend our whole 90 minutes trying to wordsmith this statement, and that's not our goal this afternoon. So what are your thoughts? Yes?
Well, I'm looking at the existing mission statement in the academic catalog, and there's two sentences. It says, "College mission." There's two sentences there. It says, "Palaske Technical College is a comprehensive two-year college that serves the educational needs of Central Arkansas through technical programs, a university transfer program, and specialized programs for business and industry." Now that statement is not included as part of the current statement.
That statement is outdated. Apparently, the catalog was not updated to reflect what the current statement is. That statement predates the last.
Well, I'm looking.
To the mission statement.
I'm looking at the 2016-17 PDF. So the next one would be 1718, which hasn't been published yet, that I know of.
I think Jasmine's suggesting, though, it's not after enough publication.
Well, okay, then, listen, I don't know about the nitty-gritty part, but I know that HLC gauges our adherence to our mission. And if we change the mission statement so that we no longer emphasize specialized programs for business and industry and technical programs, then HLC will no longer gauge our performance against those things.
Well, I think that you can have, so the mission statement is what you do, and then it invites the question of how you do it. And those are, those could be follow-up statements, those could be other pieces to it. I don't think they all have to be addressed in the core mission statement that people hopefully will be able to state.
Read between the lines.
I'm sorry?
Read between the lines.
Well, but I think you can talk about those things, or there could be supplemental pieces on print or web that talk about how you do it. But we can definitely take that back for consideration if that, these could be more explicit in there.
Well, the reason I bring it up, it seems to be a pretty large departure from what I thought was existing mission statement.
Thank you. We'll definitely look into that. Other thoughts? Does what's, regardless of, you know, where this statement was, I mean, what do you guys think of this proposed statement? Do you think it explains or describes what the campus is here to do? Is it something that you feel represents the work that you do?
One, the.
One, I like that it's concise, meaning regardless of what a student comes for, whether it's to obtain a certification, to take one class, that's going to be high-quality, and promoting students, regardless of program, whether it's technical, whether it's transfer, there's going to be a consistent message from the entire institution saying this is what we'll provide and help you develop, okay?
I just feel like it's a little weak, the proposals. Because the outsiders will read that, and we've always been a community economic outlook, and none of that says that.
Okay.
I agree with pretty much everyone. It seems like if we don't have the economic development piece, the leasing admission, it kind of trickles down to what else we're doing. To me, it seems like if we're trying to keep students, or I should say, if we want students to stay in the state and not go to the next state over, we train them, we teach them, but we do want them to stay in Arkansas and make contributions to Arkansas. So I don't think, I think that's fine to talk about economic development and stress it. That's we want students to contribute to the economy, and we want you to want to help them get good jobs and have good careers.
Okay. Yes.
The proposed statement is a statement for a community college. We are a technical college.
So what about that do you think excludes the technical part of the college?
Well, the original statement included the technical aspect quite clearly. So the sentence that is missing really is the missing ingredient. Which I read earlier.
Okay. Other thoughts? For our friends down on South Campus, anything? Probably because I walked away from the mic.
And then probably hearing you.
Alright, can you hear us now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Alright, I think.
From the technical investment firm, Charles, they are bringing Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Like I said, this is what we want. I mean, we need to know, we need to hear from people and get feedback. We're not going to rework it while we're sitting here, and we're also doing, having a similar session tomorrow. And so we'll take the feedback from both sessions and take it back to the planning committee or the steering committee and consider all the feedback that we get. Yes?
Just one more statement. If this becomes our mission statement, and HLC starts rating us basically or holding us accountable for our mission statement, then if we start moving away from emphasizing technical programs, there won't, I don't see them as saying, why are you moving away? If our mission statement doesn't emphasize it, then if we don't emphasize, if we move away from it, then I don't see them calling our handover.
Yep.
I see that. Yep. Joe, this isn't a matter of taking away what it is that we actually deliver as far as technical programs and transfer programs. The bottom line is that it's saying that we are going to provide access to high-quality education. Whether that high-quality education is through technical programs, transfer programs, workforce development programs, no matter what, the bottom line is that we are going to provide high-quality education across the board. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
If you want your mission statement, you want your mission statement to be concise. There aren't any complications with HLC. I'll just leave it at that.
HLC's not going to grade us on whether or not we.
They're going to grade us on whether or not we're actually providing high-quality.
They, they, exactly right. They're going to come in here, just like they were on Monday, and ask for evidence on how we are providing and the success of that providing a high-quality education in our programs and across this institution with institutional learning outcome. We have to provide that evidence. Now, what I, I mean, your old chancellor, hear what I say. Palaske Tech is a gift, and you know why? We got good people. But we've got the best of both worlds here. We are a technical college in name, okay? But we also have university transfer. We also have early college. We also have. We also have workforce training. And when you look at all of those things together, if we really want to be strict about it, we're more a community college. And that comes from an old Boag teacher.
The legislature didn't look at it that way when they let us merge.
Well, don't even talk about the legislature. Here's the deal. I mean, it's, we've got to remember that the mission statement, clear, concise. It's how we provide technical training, okay? And I think when we get down a little bit further and you see strategic priorities, bigger areas, then we can start pinning specifics into those. And then I think we can see how all-encompassing our college is to a number of programs and to all of us and to all of our students. Okay, then I'll shut up.
Well, we are going to talk about vision in just a second, but are you good? Okay, perfect. Okay, well, we will move on to vision. And like I said, if there's something else that you have thoughts about, send us some notes. Oh, there were a lot, okay. I see the hands.
Okay, so with the mission, the problem I see with it is it doesn't differentiate us from any other college in the UA system. We need to show that we're Palaske Tech and that we're not just Uler Second.
And you're not just, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part. Uler Second.
Not just the second Uler.
Okay. Well, let's, I, we've got that down, and as Dr. Ellebi said, I think as we move through the priorities and some of the objectives, hopefully you'll start to see a little bit more of that come out. But that's, thank you. Or is there any other comment there that we missed? I don't want to leave anyone else out. Okay. So moving on to the vision statement, again, the vision statement should be a statement that... The vision statement should be a statement that talks about a potential future. Oftentimes, vision statements are mission statements amped up. And so one of the things to remember is, if you accomplish all that you set out to do, what will be different in the world? I've had some organizations say, and I don't think this necessarily applies to institutions of education at any level, but for a traditional nonprofit organization, if their vision is realized, it would put them out of business because this perfect scenario would be realized. Now, education is an ongoing need, so I don't think that'll ever happen with any K-12 or post-secondary institution. So your current vision statement, the one that's been in place, is, "PTC will be Arkansas's leading comprehensive two-year college focused on student success and recognized regionally for excellence in workforce development and university transfer education." So again, we're proposing a very different vision statement here that's focused, again, going back to students and knowing that you have this diverse population of students who are coming here for a multitude of reasons that we've already talked about a little bit, that the vision for the institution, and oftentimes you can start off and say, "We envision a future where student potential is realized." It would be a longer form of this. But the idea is that everything is working toward a future where every student who steps on campus, or every person who steps on campus is realizing student potential. So I know this one is very different than where we were, so... And we had quite a bit of conversation about this a few weeks ago, so. Yes?
This is just a question. Was there a specific reason or was it intentional to go so simple with the mission and the vision? And what was that reason for?
So typically, you want people to be able to answer the question and remember mission and vision statements. And so if you stopped anyone on campus, and I've actually seen people from visiting accrediting teams do this when they're visiting, stopping people on campus and say, "What's the mission of your PTC or UA PTC?" Or "What's the vision?" And they'll ask students, faculty, staff, that, to see how much it's embedded into the culture. And so my, you know, my preference really is to come up with statements that are concise and to the point so that if anyone is stopped on campus, people know who you are and what you're striving for and can answer that question. And even, you know, with the mission statement, they don't get the words exactly right. You know, hopefully they can get close to it. You know, hopefully they can get close to it or think about it. So that was a bit of a test behind some of that. Yes? Yes?
Is this sort of a draft, or is this sort of, because I heard you say that you were thinking about, I would use the term longer as in as long as the current, but you said you were going to sort of see it as more.
So I guess, so let me rephrase that. This is what we presented as a mission statement. It's a draft in the sense that we're getting feedback from people and so it could be rewritten or it could be tweaked. What I was sharing and saying, you know, we envision a future where every student's potential is realized. I mean, we could have a longer statement like that, but that's kind of the, when writing vision statements and going through exercises, a lot of times I have people pretend they're saying all those words and then we try to get it down to something a little bit shorter. Does that make sense? Okay.
I like the proposed mission state, I like the issue of clarity and conciseness. I think this might be a little overfilled. I mean, I would feel like it would need to be an inspiring statement. So even if it was just a few flowery words that added some inspiration, it sounds a little, it comes, it seems to me that it might come across a little flat.
Okay.
Just that, not like it is, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
Kind of to his point, it seemed very, like, very flat to me. Because I still, I attended a seminary at North Park University in Chicago a couple, in 2015, 2014, 2015. I still remember their vision statement, to create leaders who live lives of significance and service. So it's very active, it's more an active voice. Like, so I, I know going in that, you know, as a student and I felt like the culture there definitely, it felt like that. Everyone was, all the classes, all, all the interests that my professors had and what I was doing went along with that vision. So it was very clear by their, by their behavior, they coupled with these words. And so if, if it kind of, I don't know what additional words, I don't know necessarily flowery words, but if it could, if it could say some type of action, that this is something that we're seeking to do for our students, this is our vision, this is how we're going to make this action step to reach our students in this capacity, I think that would kind of add another element of making the mission statement couple with the vision statement a lot stronger, even if you don't have all those additional words that were in the current statement about it being about economic development or it being a technical college. If it's supposed to be student-centered, it just needs to almost sound like it's coming from us. Like, I'm telling you, my student, this is my commitment to you and that's not what I'm doing.
Okay. So, and this is me just testing ideas and clarifying. So if you said to a student, my job is to realize your potential, that, I mean, going back to you, because your statement that you started was that to create, and then you went on to create students or to create leaders, I think you said?
Well, that was the vision statement from.
Right, yeah. Right. So, I mean, taking that structure, that sentence structure, and if a student came to you, you know, I mean, is it an accurate statement to say that you're here to help realize their potential? And is that sufficient or am I hearing you say it needs to be something more than that?
I, I, yes and no. I feel like that, that, yes, that is a part of, I'm new to the, you know, to the faculty community and I'm realizing in a short amount of time, that is only part of what I do. That is a tenth of what I do. So to just say, yes, I'm here because I'm helping to realize your potential, I feel like I would not get, I would not get the desired response from my student hearing that. Yeah. Because it, it sounds like something that they would hear all the time. It, you know what I'm saying? Like, there's, there's certain words and certain phrases that, that, that really trigger certain emotions from people. When, when a student comes to any academic setting and what I've told my students this semester, you should feel a sense of partnership, that as soon as you step on this campus, whatever your goal is, whatever you're, you're trying to go to another university or what, what have you, that we're partnering with you and your vision. This is what you want to do, I'm here to help you, we are in this together. So all I'm saying is, I'm not saying that I can't give that response, but if you're wanting a certain reaction or emotion evoked from the audience in giving that response, I don't think that it will fully meet that need. Does that make it clear?
I didn't hear what you, your comment was while she was.
Well, I liked you. In the bigger picture that we, that we play, it comes across, it could come across condescending. Like, I, I am a team member with my student, I am not helping them, I'm not showing them anything. And internally, this is not what we say at all. Internally, you tell us, we say, wops. So that doesn't match internally what we say.
So where does that fit in for a vision?
I don't know, I think it should be something more team collaborative as opposed to where we're, we've got right here. Okay. But still something to remember, I mean, I wrote down, my vision at Arkansas Department of Health was be right, or be first, be right, be credible. Like, it needs to be something that you can remember.
Catchy. Right. It's catchy.
What about our friends remote? I don't know if that means they like the statement or they like everything you guys have said. So let me ask this question. So if a vision statement is supposed to talk about a future that the college creates, what is the future that UA PTC creates?
Employability.
Okay, well, send us your thoughts as we, or take notes and let us know at the end. And we're going to move on to the value statements just for the sake of time. So values should be embodied in the campus or in the organization and be representative of the, of how the institution, how the organization makes decisions and chooses to act. So the previous value statements or values were integrity, improvement, and individuality. And what we are proposing based again on what we heard from different people and going through a couple of different conversations with the steering committee is actually a longer list, so this time we expanded rather than shrinking. But these are, the proposed values would be students first, learning, excellence, integrity, inclusiveness, and community. And one of the things is that sometimes these words can be defined in lots of different ways or interpreted. So typically, when you have values, you actually list value statements. I'm not going to read through the statements that accompanies each of the current values, but they are there if you want to look at those as a point of reference. So looking at the first three values, these are the statements that the group came up with a few weeks ago. So students first, keeping students at the center of all we do. Learning is committed, UA PTC's committed to lifelong learning that enhances individual and community development. And excellence is that UA PTC strives for continual improvement and innovation to realize students, employees, and the college's highest potential. So let's just focus on these three and then we'll talk about the other three. I'm getting thumbs up with those? Okay, thumbs up on the screen? So then the next three, integrity, inclusiveness, and community. Acting with honesty and integrity, not compromising the truth. Embracing diversity to promote an inclusive culture and fostering campus and community collaborations through open communication and relationship building.
I have a question.
Yes?
Why did the team select to separate inclusiveness from community?
Try to remember the specifics. Do you remember what I mean by that?
I don't remember. I'd have to go back and look at all the materials. But I do know that there was still a little bit of, even, even after we did the brainstorming session and we did a follow-up survey to get everybody's feedback on how they really feel about everything finalized together, draft finalized, right? And there were a few people that believed that those should, should not be separated. So I wouldn't say that the committee as a whole agreed that they needed to be separated, but we wanted to present them as separate to you all. So if you have any feedback on combining any of these, you certainly want to hear that.
I think it makes sense to separate them just because it seems like inclusiveness here is more focused on like culture and diversity, whereas community is focused on those collaborations that we, that we make. I don't know if it makes sense in my case.
Well, and I think that's where the value statements that follow the word or the phrase are helpful too and helping people understand what's meant by the phrase.
Yeah, I think, if I worked on the inclusiveness part of it, I remember, I remember community. Community was really the external focus of that and building those partnerships in the community. And the inclusiveness was more focused inward of what we do here and being a diverse culture and population.
Yes?
I could comment to some, but I think that the goal of simplifying conciseness and yet the statements being popping out and being alive are very well realized, I mean, with these value statements. And I think that the vision statement should follow suit, do you see what I'm saying? You know, when you compare the vision statement even with just each of these individual statements, I think there's a huge difference sort of just in the way that they pop out of you. And so that would just be my suggestion, if the vision statement could somehow encapsulate not obviously everything, but in some key to the goal of conciseness, but also if they could, if they could pop like these statements individually.
Okay.
You know, you know what I'm saying?
Did you have additional?
Yeah, I was, I was pretty much going to say, say the same thing, that I did notice that. And then now receiving the explanation regarding inclusiveness and community, as you were going through each one of the values, the word that, that I wrote down in its totality is teamwork. So the words itself communicate, you have the, these proposed values going back to how do we want students to feel when they come to the campus, we're partnering with them. All these words communicate partnership. The vision does not communicate partnership. So I, I think going back to the mission, mission statement again, I can see partnership a little bit more now getting the explanation about the values, partnership is the mission, but the vision statement still doesn't fit.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, what about our friends on South Campus? Anything related to the value statements? Okay. Wonderful. Okay. Well, like I said at the beginning, my email address and Jasmine's email address will pop up on the last slide, and so we will welcome additional feedback, our thoughts. But I want to move us on to the priorities statement. And again, you have these on paper in front of you, but we're going to talk through them. And the strategic priorities are high-level, some people call them goals, but high-level prioritization of things. And then we're going to drill down into what they look like or what they could look like in action and have some questions for you to think about as we move through them. So first, I just want to present the four priorities that we came up with and then we'll break each one down and discuss them individually. And we have presented them in an order that the group talked through. And so this is representing that they would be priorities one, two, three, and four as they are on the slide. So the first priority is focused cultivate student success. And again, we'll talk about what that looks like here in a minute. The second is to ensure faculty and staff excellence. The third, create systems of organizational effectiveness. And finally, to tell our story. So as we drill into each one of these, the questions I want you to think about is do these priorities and the objectives that I'll share align with the proposed mission, vision, values of UA PTC? Knowing that there might be some tweaking to those statements, but hopefully the, the overall thoughts that we've heard related to those statements, do they align with those statements and with the college and, and what's happening here? And then one of the things that we'll be doing also is coming up with metrics for success and ways to measure these activities. And so not that we need to say 10% growth of, you know, student enrollment or 7%, you know, retention increase, that's not what we're looking for this afternoon. What we're looking for is what might be different if these things happen or what would success look like? And it could be qualitative, it doesn't have to be quantified for the purposes of this conversation. So again, we're looking for alignment, not just with the proposed statements, but with the reality that you live here on campus and then what would success look like if we're, if we move these ideas forward? Any questions about that before we jump into it? Okay. So the first idea around cultivating student success, again, the idea is to keep the high-level priority pretty simple so that if you're walking around or you're talking to somebody, a potential partner or a funder, you could say, you know, these are the four things, these are the four priorities of the institution. And then they'll say, you know, tell me more about how you cultivate student success. And then there's the follow-up pieces that you would have. And so for each of these priorities, we wrote a statement, much like with the value statements, that actually explains it a little bit more and then we'll drill down into some objectives. And this is where it would be helpful actually to pull out a handouts because we didn't put all of the different objectives on the slides. We figured it would be easier for you to look at those on paper. So all we have up on the slides are the priorities and the descriptors of them. And then you can look at the proposed objectives that go along with each one. But again, the idea of cultivating student success through the delivery of excellent technical and transfer programs, support services, workforce training, and co-curricular activities, all of which are designed to meet the needs of our students and lead them to persist continually. So this is where we drill down and we talk a little bit more specifically about how we accomplish the mission through student success in particular. And we do get more specific in talking about the wider array of programs and services that are offered through the campus. And then you can see on the sheet, there's seven objectives that we've proposed and those would get a little, they will be further discerned and that are distilled and then we will develop action statements or implementation ideas to go along with those. But at a high level, what are your thoughts on this priority? Yes?
I appreciate the word technical. And workforce training, I kind of like that too.
Okay. Thank you. One of the things as you scan the objectives is we try to identify everything from the time this student. time the student, you'll see the very first objective is related to the admissions process. And so it's from point of entry through their time on campus to completion is the goal behind this priority and the student experience at all points.
I thought it's got like the word pathways in it, maybe that came from guided pathways? I'm not sure, but I think that's the problem.
Yes. Yes. It's nice when that happens. Are there, and I know you guys are reading through this right now, are there items that you would expect to see associated with a priority around student success that you don't see on that list?
I just had a question about 1.7 of the objectives. Could you clarify for me what, like what you mean by expand community outreach? Are you talking about like internships or something? That part is kind of unclear.
So I think it's multifaceted. It gets at, you know, securing resources is both human and physical resources and opportunities as well. So it could be partnerships with organizations that provide internships. So for, you know, it could be partnerships with organizations that provide dollars to go elsewhere on campus. I think it's a variety, it could, it will be a variety of different things that tie into that. But it's really about external partnerships to support student success through opportunities, funds, partnerships.
Because without saying that there are gonna be metrics developed in order to measure the attainment of each one of these objectives.
Yes. Yep. Yeah, our goal this afternoon is really to make sure they're the right objectives, and then we'll work to develop the metrics to go along with them. And that's where, again, the question of what does success look like? If we accomplish these or if we work towards these objectives, in a year or three years from now, what's different? Because we've done, or we focused on these things. The other thing I'll put out there too that is important to think about is strategic planning. We're starting this new, this new strategic plan will be in place later this year, and it doesn't just, it shouldn't just cut the previous one. You know, somebody shouldn't walk on campus and feel like they're on two different campuses because you've ended one strategic plan and you're starting another one. What we're doing is making sure that this is aligning with where the campus is going. But it really should be building off of the work from the previous plan. And so there are gonna be elements that are in the previous strategic plan that carry through on this one, and then there's gonna be new elements introduced. But what this does is it highlights where attention will be focused and the prioritization of activities to drive decision-making within UAPTC. Thoughts on success or what would be different?
Looks good.
People moving.
I think there should be more student organization if we want increased student activity. Because usually when I talk to a student, they say, you know, PCC is nice, but it's kind of boring. And if you're at South Campus, it's pretty much like, go town around 5:00. I'd have something around for our students so that way they participate and they go involved, and not just, oh, I go to that school sometime. I can be here all the time, go to other, I can have organization for our meeting people and be great maybe.
And I think that that probably will play out under what's listed as 1.2, but we can make sure that that's included in there, or maybe more specific, or included in action statements to supplement that objective. Anything else? Okay. Wonderful. Well, let's move on to the second one. Priority two is to ensure faculty and staff excellence. Again, the longer statement is ensure the delivery of high-quality programs and services to promote student success and organizational effectiveness through the development of our faculty and staff. So one of the things that we heard across the board when we were here was, you know, let's look at, you know, students obviously are the outcome and the product and what we're working to support here. But we need to hire, support, and retain high-quality faculty and staff in order to be able to do that. And so it was very important to include a priority focused on the faculty and staff in this plan. And so you'll see on the statement, there's four different objectives there around recognition, professional development, and just looking at how faculty and staff can be engaged and supported on campus. Yes?
One comment I would add towards the professional development aspect, I fully realize that this would be 100% budget-based, but I think that it'd be good to include not just internal professional development, but maybe say wider nationwide sort of conferences and things like that that are discipline-specific.
Right.
But obviously that's an example.
Okay.
Yes. I know we're discussing which objectives to say or go or whatever. 2.4, where it talks about leveraging employee collaboration and engagement. I'm hoping that I'm reading this correctly when I ask this question. But how exactly would that, like, is it supposed to work? I guess like the cross-functional interdisciplinary activities, that's the part I'm not really understanding. Like I'm trying to feature it, per se, it's like...
Yay, that's a great objective.
Sure, yeah, I can see what it sounds like to me.
Well, I think shared governance is definitely a part of that. I think it also reflects some of the feedback that we've heard both from faculty and staff about siloing on campus and trying to find ways to get people to work across schools, across departments, on different projects. And also reflected in that statement were comments that we heard around one person being trained to do one thing. Then that's probably a little bit more on the staff side than the faculty side, but from an administrative capacity perspective, what happens if that person leaves or if that person's out on an extended, you know, absence or something like, who covers this and things? And so the idea of cross-training so that people, or also the idea that, you know, if a student needs something, they don't have to go to five different people to get it. If a couple, if multiple people knew how to answer questions. And just trying to better leverage resources from that perspective is really where that was coming from. So there's, I think there's several different things in there. How that actualizes is really kind of part of the next step, but I think identifying that as something that needs to happen was an important piece of what we heard. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, we should keep it.
I really like this. And one thing that I would like to see, I don't know if there was a specific reason why, but in 2.2 where it says create systems by professional development opportunities that improve job skills, leadership, and so forth. But I think when we're talking about, I know it's faculty and staff, but for faculty especially, I would really like something that talks about, you know, the focus on excellence in instruction or like high-quality instruction classroom. Maybe instruction and job skills.
Okay. So just to clarify more explicitly than assuming instruction's included in job skills.
Yeah, that is our job, but I understand. I would just like it to be explicit that that is something that we strive for.
Okay. South Campus? Thumbs up, not a normal thumbs up. Okay. Good. So let's move on to priority number three. Create systems of organizational effectiveness. Again, the longer statement, develop consistent, high-quality programs across the campus that develop systems to maximize efficiencies and effectiveness. This really gets into the operations of the institution and how things get done and looking at those types of activities. So I'll give you a chance, there's a longer list, to skim through those and let us know your thoughts. Yes?
I think it would be good to add a phrase while meeting stakeholders' needs.
Okay.
Maximizing efficiency. I mean, you can be very efficient and not do anything.
Or not do what you need to be doing.
Ma'am?
Not do what you need to be doing. I mean, your statement around meeting stakeholders.
Well, efficiency and effectiveness, they, you know, they address, but, you know, if we're going to maximize efficiency, but at the same time not meet our stakeholders' needs, there needs to be a balance, in my opinion, that we're, we've still gotta be satisfying our audience.
Okay. Thank you. I see a hand in the back room.
No, I was gonna say that efficient and effectiveness, I mean, when you're effective, you're actually fulfilling what you were set to do, so I'm not following you. So if you're efficient, that means that you did it with the least amount of resources. If you're effective, you actually did it, so you actually...
Well, you can do one thing effectively. You can do one thing effectively.
Right, and not efficient.
But what if your audience wants more than one thing? What if they, what if they want several things? And you say, no, we're just gonna be effective and efficient in one thing.
Well, that gets into the deeper unit-level purpose, the mission, the purpose of individual units, and why they exist and what they're there to do. And they should all be assessing their effectiveness in what they're there to do, right? No matter what it is, whether it's a business office, IRPE, an academic program, no matter what, the library, cost of war. And so this was, this was put in place in purpose at all. Does that make sense?
It's concise.
What about comments related to the objectives? Are there items that you have questions about, items that are missing, other things we should be thinking about? South Campus? Okay. So last, but definitely not least, priority four is tell our story. Build and maintain a cohesive marketing and messaging plan that includes distribution across multiple mediums. So this, again, I would say, there were, you know, a few different things that came up across stakeholder group, and the idea that we need to do a better job of telling the campus's story and all that you have to offer was a pretty consistent message. And so that's what's embodied in this final priority that you'll see. And it's intentional to say across multiple mediums because we heard that piece of the message quite a bit too, that we can't just rely on one platform or one medium to get the word out, primarily because you're trying to reach so many different audiences and help people understand all that you have to offer. So aside from a yay, well, yes?
4.4, I think it should also include students.
Okay.
Instead of just, because it sounds like it's the staff's primary responsibility to recruit and retain and tell the story, but the story happens through the students. We're just one limited perspective. The students make up the masses and their individual journeys and what brought them here. Those are the stories that people want to hear when they're looking for, hey, do I go to this school versus that school? It's kind of like when your parents were telling you something versus somebody else's parents telling you something. It's like it held more significance, you know, come from a complete stranger, and it had more validity, especially if it came from a peer of yours. So I think that to one degree, yeah, employees should be encouraged to be ambassadors, but I think that just from my limited observation, like I said, I'm new. But is that what I have kind of seen from the students and the research that I've done about Pulaski Tech is that I'm not getting from the students that they feel empowered to tell their story or that they, or that they're not being ambassadors. And for me, my individual goal, I want to empower them to tell their story. It's like being on fire. Like if you're excited about your education, you're excited about your, tell everybody. Like blow it up on social media, put it out everywhere it goes. Like put it in a newspaper, tell, you know, somebody in a McDonald's drive-through, you know, this is where I go to school, that that's where that pride comes from. I'm just an instructor. So I feel like that that needs to be revised, just that one objective. Everything else looks fine to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Satisfying.
I have a question.
Yes.
The terminology, and I know you said no words in the beginning. I just want to know where the statement of tell our story, how that was chosen as a part of the priorities. You know, you have create the system, you know, you have ensure faculty excellence, cultivate students, and you have tell our story. Can you...
Honestly, I think it was, some of it was representative of language we heard that the campus isn't telling that story. So I think it just, as we were distilling the feedback and thinking through things, I mean, that's kind of what came out of that.
Please, I love it.
Yeah.
But it's bothering my hearing.
Okay. It's not parallel with the other two?
I don't think the astuteness of the other priorities and then tell our story, I would just ask to tweak a little bit.
Okay.
In response to that question, it's become very, very important in management theory that professors and managers and high-level CEOs, telling their story has become a very accepted teaching principle. So I kind of disagree with that, but that's the reason. Walt and, you know, Ed Al, that's been very popular teaching theories.
We need to get the feedback, all voices. South Campus? A little bit different than the thumbs up, right? Okay. So real quickly, again, there's the four priorities. You know, I would, well, I'd encourage you to take a minute and walk kind of just over the handout at large. We have about 15 minutes left this afternoon. And if there's something you want to go back to relative to mission, vision, values after seeing the priorities, if there's an overall, you know, macro-level feedback that you want to provide, that's what the last little bit of time that we have this afternoon is focused on. And while you're thinking about that, I'll just go ahead and put this up there so you can jot down, you probably all have Jasmine's contact information, but there's my contact information as well. I would encourage you, you know, in the next couple days, while this is still fresh in your mind, to send the feedback so that we can pull it together with the feedback that we heard today, the feedback that we'll hear tomorrow. we heard today, the feedback that we'll hear tomorrow, and really keep this process moving along and get a final plan for the campus to move forward. But again, we've got about 15 minutes this afternoon, so I'd like to hear all your thoughts about what you've seen this afternoon or if you want to go back to anything we talked about at the beginning after seeing the document at large. Do you live off of that?
Your feedback is very critical, okay? This is setting, this is setting our path for the next four years. So please take the opportunity to use your voice. It doesn't have to be in here, it can be either female, it doesn't have to be me, it can be Maggie, that's perfectly fine. But please, if you have any thoughts about any changes, please, please share those with
Is that everything we have to say? Everything you're going to say? Maybe. Oh, we, somebody got up there?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any feedback down there on South Campus?
All is so good.
So far, so good. Would you like to? Is that a peace sign? Would you like to add anything after that one?
Y'all, this is the quietest time for it. Usually we're a noisy bunch. I think the comments today were excellent. Joe said he was going to shut up, but.
Well, not today.
But I think, again, this, this is an opportunity for all of us. You know, I can sit here and ask all day long about this, but it's, it's not my whole plan. And I don't care if you are new or you've been here for a long time. I didn't say a hundred years. It doesn't matter because all of us have good perspectives. We know what we see every day with our students. We know who we interact with, whether it's students, whether it's community members, whether it's legislators, and all of that has to fit into this. Okay? It is four years. We're doing this in four years. And we're doing that because we got program review in four years, we have accreditation in four years, okay? All of that, and then we're going to academic master plan in four years, all of this is going to come together. So contact Maggie, contact Jasmine if you want, doesn't matter. But if you've got more input, give it to us. Because here's my mom's statement, if you don't like it when it comes out and then they're because nobody provided the input, that's not good either. So that's, that's why we're, we're doing this, so everybody can have a voice. Because every voice is important, okay? So just think about that. And then if something strikes you at 1:30 in the morning, like it does with me sometimes, then you just get on there and email Maggie and say, hey, I'm up. And this is what I thought about. Okay? All right? Is that good with everybody? I appreciate y'all coming. I appreciate you coming, all of you, okay? That's what makes this place great, one of the things. So cogitate on this. If you think of something, you want to come back at the nine o'clock one tomorrow, right?
Yep.
Same bad time, same bad channel, right? Then come on back and go through it again, okay?
I will just add that, the two things. One, I'll go back to an earlier statement, I said that every iteration of this will make the plan stronger. So we really do want to make sure it's a plan that you guys support and that you can live and actualize and that it doesn't just become a document on a shelf or on a red page that nobody goes to. The other thing that I think is really important for you to know, and hopefully you do know this, but I think it's important for us to share, is that in talking to the faculty, staff, and students here, it was very clear that the people who work here have a commitment to this institution and to the students who are enrolled here regardless of what they're studying. And you guys all may have very different roles on this campus, but you're driven by the success of your students. And, you know, for somebody just coming in to visit the campus and spending, you know, the better part of, I think, you know, a week and a half to two weeks here, every group that we talked to that came through regardless of anything else we heard that was consistent. And so you should know that you and your colleagues are here to help the students who step on, step foot on campus every day regardless of what brings them here. So I think that's a great avenue to this campus and one that academic help will carry through regardless of what the plan says. So on behalf of your students that we heard from, you should know that you're appreciated and thank you for all that you're here. And thank you for your time this afternoon.
Thank you. So good evening. Thank you.